Stand for the pledge, please. And here, please. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible and just for all.
And real call, please.
Alderman Smith, Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Yeah.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Wolfen.
Here.
We have a forum.
And approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And presentation of awards, I don't think we have any. Uh, personal appearances?
The word is going to be on the schedule.
Alright. And the city administrator's report.
Okay, uh, so you may have noticed that the overlay work began today. As I sent out an email to you letting you know, and we have published as well as we can, uh, that Forest Street will be closed tomorrow, taking advantage of the school closing, so we don't have to, uh, cause a problem for the bus, the bus traffic. Uh, they can get in, get it done in one day, the opening, it'll be fine. Uh, they'll post a, a man at, um, Park or Cedar, um, to catch any trucks that are over nine feet in height that couldn't make it under the, the, the trestle, if they took the syrup and, and direct them back around Market. So hopefully that will be a minor inconvenience to, to those who are involved. And I included there the schedule for the rest of the work that they have planned. Tended the Heritage Commission meeting, is Dave reporting tonight, are you reporting tonight? Okay. Uh, the, uh, Dave has presented that there's been some discussion about economic hardship and how that might be made more functional than, than it is currently under the, the, the regulations. So Dave had, uh, recommended some amendments to that. Um, there were several members who couldn't make the meeting, so they decided to defer action on it. Uh, but they will be discussing that at the next meeting and bringing a, an amendment to your attention, uh, which gives, uh, some latitude in considering economic, uh, ability in, in deciding what, what work will be, will be approved in the future. Would, uh, always go to the Simo Regional Planning Meetings, but, uh, the, you are aware that the city and the county jointly applied for a grant from the Delta Regional Authority to interconnect the city's water line on Progress Parkway to the public water district's water line on Highway 32. That interconnectivity serves both interests in that in the event of a water line break, we can shut one down, switch over to the other, and nobody will ever be, be out of service. Uh, we, we have that interconnection elsewhere in the city, so it's always good to do it where we, where we can. Uh, that grant was awarded, and, uh, the papers are being processed now, and that work will, will go out for bid.
Will that be their bid or ours, or?
The county's gonna do it.
Okay.
The, um... The closing on the real estate that has been pending, uh, has occurred. Uh, we had to review closing documents, found a few errors, and mostly just misspellings title of company, didn't know what Tropman was spelled with an A instead of an O, that kind of thing. Uh, but we got it all properly filed, and, uh, the money's in the bank. The, um... Gary's here. Um, Gary has a list of projects, as we discussed, that, uh, he's been wanting to do, some of you have been asking him from time to time, when are you gonna get this curve done, when are you gonna get this, that, and that done? He's always said, as soon as the grass stops growing. Well, the grass has stopped growing. And, uh, so he hopped on one of his first projects, which is, uh, uh, kind of rehabilitating the drainage structures here on either side of the creek for, for Forest Street. And he and his crew fabricated, uh, some forming and poured some concrete to, it was really, um, quite, quite a creative endeavor. You couldn't, you... I was, uh, I was impressed. But, uh, those, those things have been done, and he's gonna be moving down the list, and I've given you a list of the things that he has proposed here on my report. Alderman Rainey and I attended a joint meeting of the Chamber of Commerce and the Industrial Development Corporation. Uh, the question that they want answered is, you know, why aren't we building more houses in St. Genevieve? Uh, I believe the city has done what we can to encourage, uh, investment in single-family residential housing in the $200,000 range. Uh, we will continue to stand ready to do what we can at that meeting, as I always get asked, well, why can't we do what Peevely does, or why can't we do what Farmington does? Like, what? Well, they'll pay for the utilities. So, once again, this is not the first time I've done it, I was at a meeting where both the city administrators of Perryville, I said Peevely, Perryville and Farmington were, uh, were present, and I said, this question was asked of me at a meeting, tell me again, what do you do? I said, we, we don't, we don't do that. We, we, developers have to put in their own infrastructure, dedicate them to the city. So whoever is getting the message that they're doing something, the only thing I'm aware of is Perryville has extended, uh, some sewer lines they were gonna otherwise extend anyway, sooner than they might have done so, in order to serve, uh, a development. And Farmington extended a road that was on their capital improvement program, uh, at the same time that a, a, a development was occurring. So I guess to some people, it appears the city's doing the work that the developer might otherwise do, but that's, that's not the case. And finally, um, I received a, a, a call, um, years ago, the city, uh, entered into an agreement with a marketing company that was going to try and find cellular people, not just cell companies, that wanted to take advantage of the height of our water towers in order to mount antenna on them and, uh, and provide service to the city. And that, that never bore fruit. However, I did receive a call from a company that would, now that we have the water tower on Progress Parkway, which is kind of the highest point around, who's inquired about that possibility. I told him that, that the board was amenable to that in the past, but that we don't have a current agreement, and it's a new board relative, I mean, there's only one person here who was on the board when that, that happened before. And then I would bring it to your attention and kind of see if you'd be receptive to receiving a lease proposal for, um, for a location of antenna on top of our water tower. I talked to Steve, prior to him, Terry, Alliance's, uh, position is we'd rather not have anything up there, but it really doesn't get in the way, but, you know, it's just kind of, maybe it would be a problem if we had to paint the top of the tank and, you know, that kind of thing. I don't have any estimate of revenues, I haven't talked to them about any specific details, 'cause I didn't want to proceed until I had a sense of whether or not you would, uh, be favorable in considering a proposal. Yes, sir.
I mean, from an engineering standpoint, I mean, will the water tower support it, or what? I would want to know that first, before deciding.
I'm sure I could get an opinion from Cochran, if, if, somebody's gonna have to say, this is what I want to put up there before.
Right, how big, how much weight?
Are we obligated to ask the county with anything on that, since they're helping pay for it?
I think that would be the, the proper thing to do, but... Proceed. Okay, I'll talk to him, I'll get some details, I'll talk to Cochran, I'll confer with the county. Uh, I think one of the questions that Joe just raised is any revenue that's derived from that, you know, might need to be shared, since they're sharing in the cost of financing this.
Is there any liability involved with that?
I don't know, I'm the wrong person to ask the question of liability.
I'd want to know if we're insured.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have an intended re-provision or insurance provision in there, so it's really not a lot of risk associated with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, any questions? Yes, sir.
Wasn't there something said a year or so ago about Forest Street Bridge being replaced?
Yes.
Was that county project, or they give us the money, or?
The county, the county gets, uh, contributions from the state that are, it's called the Road and Bridge Fund. The county has brought all of their bridges up to Stanton. They continue to receive deposits into the Road and Bridge Fund, credits to their account. And I, I was, uh, I was told that they would like to, uh, pursue the replacement of the Forest Street Bridge when enough money has accumulated in that account to start working on it, it's a couple of years down the road.
Oh, okay.
Didn't we apply for some grant for?
I thought we did.
We did apply for a grant, and we, we didn't receive it, and that was the transportation alternative or enhancement grants, I forget which name they're using this year. Uh, but that was to, to put a sidewalk outside of the grid abutment, and then eliminate the sidewalk on the inside, so you have full width going through there. It, it wasn't replacing the structure.
That is a good idea. Do we know how much that would cost, through that sidewalk over there?
Yes, I'd have to look it up, I don't want to just shoot, shoot from the hip, but I, I have the cost estimate in the, in the grant. Those grants are, are, are competitive every year, you know, some, it just depends on who applied, and the, the grant committee views the various applications that are made, so you never, you never know. Thank you.
You don't?
Somebody has a question.
Alright, next up, staff reports, first one is the Police Department. Chief Bennett did not be here tonight, so Lieutenant Jason Crump is here.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Crump.
You guys have the report in front of you, any questions we can help you with?
I don't know, I think.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for being here.
Next up is Steve Wilson with the Alliance Water.
Good evening, everyone. A while back, we approved the purchase of a new jetter.
Sewer jetter for the sewer department. Uh, wanted to let you guys know, we took delivery of that today. We received training on it most of the day, and then we put it into service this afternoon. It's, uh, it's quite the machine, it's...
So, explain the differences in the capabilities you now have with that, of course, if it will be played in.
The previous machine was a 20 gallon a minute machine, it was 20 gallons a minute at 2,000 PSI. Uh, the new machine is a 3, 3,000 PSI machine at 30 gallons a minute. It's, in water, it's nearly double, uh, in, as far as its, its usefulness and effectiveness on, on cleaning the inside of the sewer mains. The old machine was worn to the point that it would no longer provide enough pressure. Now, the 2,000 PSI was when it was new. Uh, it was, it was barely pushing 1,500 there at the end.
Did it increase the reach?
Yes, it's about 100 feet longer. Uh, we went to a 600-foot hose instead of a 500-foot hose, uh, which most manholes, they can be up to like, normally about 500 feet apart. Sometimes you just fall short of that, and then you gotta refill the machine and go to the other end and come back the wrong way. Therefore, you know, forcing water in a sewer main to go the wrong direction, you know, it's always a bad thing. Uh, this one has plenty of power and, um, cutting ability, if we get into roots grease, uh, provides the volume of water that's needed to move material down the line. It's, it's, it's really the machine to have, so, we think it...
What does that do to the sewer plant? Treatment plant, and that stuff they were breaking loose?
The, the grease and materials that'll float, float to the grease top of the lift stations, uh, before the head works to the wastewater plant, uh, we have to clean those out by hand. The organics, the rock dissolve, become blended in with the other stuff, so...
The other stuff?
Yeah.
The inorganics?
Yeah. Speaking of that stuff, uh, we did have the lime and the bio solids removed from the wastewater plant and the lime ponds, uh, at the end of the month. You'll notice some of the dump trucks down St. Mary's Road and around the area, we hauled out nearly 750 dump truck loads.
So I hate to burden the Board of Alderman with getting too much into the weeds of waste treatment, sort of operations, but talk about the, uh, lime pits and the bottom of the lime pits, and what the problem is, and why we're gonna have to do something to address it.
That's next on my list.
Oh, okay.
So, our lime storage facilities, I don't know how many people's been down there, but it's basically two, two-acre ponds, and it's an astronomical amount of storage to begin with, and once the lime sits down there for so long, it becomes hard. It becomes hard to remove, it costs more to remove it, costs more to land it by it. So the first thing we, we need to do is maybe condense it down to one pond, uh, with a, basically a levee down, a divider levee down the middle. And that way the, we can offload in any location in the pond, and the sludge haulers can remove it from any location with ease. The other problem we're running into is with the removal process, the pond was designed with a four-foot clay liner, uh, which is typical of a lime pond or a lagoon. For some reason, this one was capped with about a foot of rock. Uh, so in the removal process, they put a pump in there, it gets churned up, the rocks get stuck in their pumps, it damages the equipment. They've actually had, it used to haul it out with a pump, it's no longer possible, uh, so now they have to put a track hoe out there in the pond and dig it out and haul it out in dump trucks every time. So, and, in fact, to the point that, you know, the sludge haulers have mentioned that, you know, something has to change, not just the specific sludge hauler we use, but, uh, all of them that we've used over the years. So what I'll be putting together is a plan to eliminate one of the ponds, put like a levee down the middle, a road down the middle of one of them, uh, and remove the rock from the lime pond. Um, all the old material could be stored in the other pond for fill, and the clay that is in the other pond could possibly be dug out, moved over to the other, uh, to the useful one. So with any luck, all materials would be on site.
How often do you have to remove it, Steve?
We remove lime sludge annually.
Once a year?
Once a year. It got behind there for a long time, lime sludge was not removed, one of the ponds was completely full. The city did not remove lime sludge for many years, and it was full just sitting there. So every year, I budget enough to take out what we fill it with each year, and then more out of the existing area, make it headway each year.
Arguably, the costs associated with doing this would be payback, recaptured through reduced costs and...
Reduced cost of the removal and land application.
Material handling, yes. So you, do we have to have, I mean, is DNR involved in any of that design, or?
Technically, no, but I would involve them anyway. Our lime holding facility is still the same lime holding facility, but I would update them on the design and the, uh, removal of one of the lagoons, uh, the lime ponds. Each, each piece of the treatment process is different points. So like, our water treatment plant is a beadwater treatment plant. If that scores a, a 32 with two ponds, maybe it only scores a 30 with one pond, so you want to get that removed and make sure everything's, uh, updated in their system.
That's basically what you're talking about doing, is taking all that rock out and putting it in the other pond?
Yeah, and just take the clay from the other pond and put in the middle as the divider.
So there's no other way of getting rid of it?
Uh, high cost with, uh, excavators and dump trucks, 775, 750 loads.
Where does that go?
Uh, that material was taken down to Lourdes, uh, where they'll land it by on the fields down there.
What was that cost involved in?
Pardon me?
How much was it to have that done?
$130,000.
But, uh, one of the problems is you don't want to bring, uh, extraneous material into the farmer's field, either.
Like rocks?
Yeah, like rocks.
Yeah, we, we did have one farmer that was, uh, very unlikely that we'll be able to land apply on those fields, due to the material he received.
Do you have any kind of rough guess whatsoever of like, a project like this would, would cost at all? You know, want to get, like, rough estimate?
Yeah, I might have Dr. Bowman's or Joe Custer, somebody that will perform the work.
How much, um, how much was the cost when they were capable of pumping it out instead of excavating it out?
Uh, we were, I think, at $85,000 a year.
Okay, so roughly like 50 grand more was the cost, okay.
Yeah.
It's an astronomical amount of storage for, for its purpose.
Just wondering why we had two ponds to begin with?
Somebody in 1993 decided that.
I'm gonna say something I shouldn't say. It was designed by a firm that has, has a reputation for overdesign.
There you go.
Steve, the transent lines on Chadwell, do we just leave them in place?
Yes.
Don't worry about taking them out?
No, no, you abandon them in place. Yeah, that was the other thing, we did a lot of work on Chadwell Lane, uh, contractor found what was supposed to be an abandoned line at the top of the hill. About a week's worth of research and digging and potholing and excavating, um, we had found that the line was still connected and still in use. Uh, we managed to move the few services over to the new line that was already there and in service. We abandoned the, the, I think it was like 1,200 feet maybe, 1,200 feet of transite line. We abandoned it in place, it could have been serviced the way it should have been done in the first place.
Alright, thanks, sir.
Steve, next up, Sandra Cabot, Tourism Director.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, so you have my report, um, I touched on a few things, just in case Alderman ever get any questions about some of these things. Um, I have, uh, kind of the highlights there of a National Park Service, uh, status update, and then on the back of your sheet is a longer, um, update that I provided at the St. Genevieve Fall History Conference. And, um, so if you ever get questions about what's been going on lately, and you can't remember all my individual reports, you can refer back to that. Um, at the present time, uh, the Amaro House is, uh, owned by the National Park Service, Department of the Interior. Um, they are sending National Park Service Rangers to provide interpretation there some slash most days, but not all days. So the state, um, State Park Service that runs the Felix Valley State Historic Site that previously did the interpretation at the Amaro, they are still occasionally, uh, providing staffing to cover the Amaro site, um, interpretation. Also, I thought you might like to know that the St. Genevieve Museum Learning Center, which was without an executive director for about six months, now has hired an executive director, and they are moving forward full steam with, um, proceeding with the implementation plan to get the museum completed and open sometime next spring. Meanwhile, the St. Genevieve Art Guild has been working with the county to transition the former museum building to be the new home for the art guild, um, and they are very excited about that. They have been bounced all around the community for various events that they've done over the last decades, that they have been, um, active in St. Genevieve. Um, I've also been attending the Jour de Fête reorganizational meetings, um, they are, they still have to have an election, but a new person came forward for, to volunteer as a crafts chairperson, so that was very important. Um, we have three new businesses downtown in addition to the Common Grounds, um, which I hope most people went to either the soft openings or the real opening, um, which was yesterday? It's been a busy week. Um, there are two other, uh, new businesses in the historic district, one is Lazart on Merchant Street, and the other is Lavender Moon, in the, uh, location that previously held Odile's Linen and Lace. You have heard in previous, um, reports that there has been a subcommittee of the Holiday Christmas Festival Committee that has been meeting to discuss specifically new decor for the city streets for, um, holiday season, because we will no longer be able to put up the lighted, um, snowflakes and candy canes and things like that on the utility poles as per Citizens Electric. And so, um, those will be, those will mostly be hung up the end of November, and, um, at the Welcome Center on the weekend after Thanksgiving, there'll be a group of volunteers that will get together if you would like to participate in that effort, or if you know anyone else who needs some service hours for Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts or high school, we can always use help, that will be the Sunday after Thanksgiving. I have, um, information for you with regard to the, um, statistics for the year, there's a sheet in your packet that shows, uh, the high months, the low months, the in-between months. This year, uh, as you know, with the flooding, we were impacted greatly on certain months. We had a really great May, and then a really terrible June and July, then we had a great August and a really terrible September. We're still hoping that October comes in pretty strong, um, it's hard to say. Uh, this weekend is the, um, Fourth Friday Art Walk tomorrow night, and also, um, the Rural Heritage Day Festival on Saturday down along St. Mary's Road. This is done by the St. Genevieve's Lions Club Organization. Some of you may be Lions Club members, there's a lot of really great volunteers that participate in, um, putting those events on. They were down there today trying to beat the rain and get their tents up, and now, um, the street department helped put up the large tent, and then Lions Club put up, um, four or five other tents in addition to that. So, um, if you can be there, um, it's nine to five on Saturday, and then in the evening, on Saturday evening, is the annual fundraiser in Memorial Cemetery. This is St. Genevieve's, uh, Memorial Cemetery, the first cemetery in the state of Missouri, right here, two blocks away, runs five to eight PM on Saturday evening. So you learn a little history and hopefully don't get wet that night. I have copies of this, if anyone would like some for your business, or, um, to take back just so that you're well informed on what's happening in St. Genevieve. I put a couple of other event notes on there, too. Cookie Crumb Trail is coming up November 9th, that's a big activity for St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal Group. And then also on November 30th is the Shop Small Program. This is across the whole city. This is, um, sponsored nationwide by American Express, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, Saturday after Black Friday, basically. And so, um, the Welcome Center signs up as a neighborhood champion, will have materials at the Welcome Center that businesses are welcome to stop by and pick up. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce does the same thing, and also St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal, or Downtown St. Jen does the same thing, too. So if you want shop small buttons, or pins, or balloons, or shopping bags, call 883-7097, and we'll get you some. Thank you.
Any committee reports? At this time, we will have a public hearing, uh, at six thirty. The St. Genevieve Board of Alderman will hold a public hearing on the proposed water sewer rates to be set by the Board of Alderman.
Okay, um, as Bill, this is a public hearing, um, is in, not, we will not be acting on anything tonight, purposes to hear, uh, from citizens in response to the publication of proposed sewer and water rate adjustments. I'd like to spend just a minute to kind of go over the history, and I've done this with you before, but... spend just a minute to kind of go over the history, and I've done this with you before, but for the sake of the hearing, kind of where we've been, where we are and where we're going. The city's operated water and sewer system for many years. Both of those things are licensed by the state of Missouri and subject to the regulations of the Department of Natural Resources. In September of two thousand and seven, an inspection was done of the city's wastewater collection and treatment system. They found what they thought were problems in the operations of the system and asked for the city to provide additional information as to the operations and what they had observed. The city submitted its records and they found in, and the city submitted the records in November of two thousand and eight and in December of two thousand and eight, EPA and DNR cited the city for violations of the Clean Water Act and found numerous sanitary sewer overflows and exceedances in the discharge limits of the operating permit for the treatment plant over the prior five-year period. A violation of the Clean Water Act is a serious problem if not promptly addressed. The EPA filed we're gonna take action against the city. The city agreed to enter into an order of compliance and consent in July of two thousand and nine, which required the city to, to, to commit to a continuing improvement plan with both short and long-term capital investment projects, timetables for execution, financial resources, a commitment to providing the financial resources and sources of funding for doing the program. The sources of funding would be borrowing through bonds or grants, loans, utility fees, whatever sources the city could identify. And they need to be sufficient to successfully accomplish the projects and actions that were being required. In, uh, December of two thousand and eight, that plan of action, which was provided with the help of Coroner and Shipron, Shipron was, was approved. The funds were raised through a combination of, uh, Missouri DNR loans, which was basically a bond issue that the state buys the bonds and, and a grant. And, and the city adopted rates that were sufficient to fund the improvements in addition to the continued operation maintenance and then the payment of the debt service, which it didn't have before. In August of two thousand and nine, same year, prior to December, Alliance Water Resources was hired to operate the water system. And in two thousand and ten, the city decided that Alliance Water Resources would be contracted to operate the wastewater collection and treatment system and be the city's agent for implementing the program that EPA had mandated and to which the city had committed. Alliance and the city continued that relationship successfully. And in November of two thousand and fifteen, all the work was completed. EPA terminated the order of compliance and consent and the city continues now to operate our wastewater and water system subject to the Department of Natural Resources regulations, but without from under the, the obligation to quarterly report to EPA and DNR on this, this, this program that we had implemented. However, it's in the interest of the city to continue the good work that has led up to this point and allowed us to get out from under the thumb of, of EPA. And five years ago, with that understanding, the Board of Aldermen adopted a five-year rate plan that anticipated the costs that we expected based on kind of the work program and what we knew about our system and provided for annual adjustments in the rates in order to meet those ongoing needs. That program, that authorization terminated this year. Steve presented a budget for this year that showed a two percent increase, but would only be applicable to this year. And the issue for you is whether you want to adopt a multi-year program that reflects our estimate of what it's going to cost in order to, to continue to operate and more importantly, maintain our system up to the increasingly high standards that are required by the state of Missouri. It doesn't get easier. They continue to ratchet down the discharge requirements. They, they annually, it seems, regulate something that they didn't regulate before. But, but Alliance, through its relationships with the state agencies, has a pretty good handle on what's coming down the pipe. We know what our, so our operating increases are going to be, both in terms of Citizens Electric and Mississippi Line. And, and, you know, but anything that we, we propose to you is, is, is an estimate, a prediction of, of future needs. Your option is to, I think, we certainly know what next year calls, it calls for and, and what we, what, what's been budgeted is, is appropriate. You can do this on an annual basis. The prior board thought it was best to do it on a multi-year basis. You don't have to do it for five years if you wanted to do it for, you know, a two-year program or a three-year program, however, however you want to do it, it's up to you. The only caveat is, the only caution is, we can't just ignore the need because that's what got us where we were in two thousand and nine. You have to stay on top of it. Failure to do so can be more costly than than saving the money. So, uh, it, it, it's prudent to, to, to try and look into the future and see what your need's going to be and take the action to meet those needs. That's my little speech.
So do we give any input or?
Well, I think it's a public hearing, so it's time for the public to be heard.
My name is Karen Stevie. I'm a resident of the city. And I basically came here to try and get informed about the water and right now I feel like our water bills are really high as a city resident. I mean, I feel like I'm paying a lot of money for water. And I feel like, again, we're being hit. I was, I'm gonna be hit on my personal property taxes and my real estate taxes. Now I'm getting hit on my water. I just really feel like, I don't know, sometimes I just wonder, you know, as a middle-class person and the elderly people that live in this, within the city limits, I just feel like we're getting hit hard all the time. And honestly, my salary is not compensating for all of these increases that I get, you know, between me and my husband. You know, we're middle-class people and I just feel like we're constantly getting hit. I understand where you're coming from, where, you know, you're saying you need to meet the requirements of the EPA and different things, but, you know, spanning out, I don't know, five years or whatever, you know, why can't you just do this, you know, within a two-year, three-year period like he was saying? I mean, just to maybe get a better estimate of your cost. Yes, I mean, I'm here, I didn't call my Alderman, I came here in person to say, you know what, I, I feel like I pay enough for water. You know, as far as improvements, I, you know, I kind of want to know, you know, what's this money going to be used for? Are our water pipes going to be replaced? Are our sewer lines going to be replaced? Because from what I hear, what we have right now is really, really old and it's not getting replaced. So, I mean, I think I have a right as a city resident to know what, you know, these increases are going to be used for. And then, you know, I've heard that certain businesses within the city limits get certain rates on their water. So I don't think that's right for me. If there are certain businesses that are getting special rates, that's not fair to me as a regular taxpayer when I, I've heard that certain businesses are getting special rates on their water. Shouldn't everybody have to pay the same rate on their water? I mean, that's something that was brought to my attention, so, you know, just, just wanting to know, you know, are you gonna, you know, improve the water system? You know, what are you gonna do with this money that you're charging us again for? And I just wanted to come here in person, not talk to my Alderman. It's just the fact that, you know what, the city residents, you know, we pay a lot for our water compared to public water, what they're paying in the county. It, it's, it's quite a substantial difference. And I, I, I guess I just want to understand why we are getting owed so much, you know, for our water. I just, I just think it's, it's high. And I'm just here in person to say that. And just want to voice my concerns. I know no one else is here. I, I don't know why. I didn't post anything on Facebook for other people to come. I, I just, me as a person, I just want to know, I feel like that we pay enough for our water and it's pretty costly. So whatever increase you're gonna pass on to me, I would like to, to have some, I guess, clarification on what you're gonna do with that money and why it's needed. That's all that I have to say.
Oh, we got, uh, the Cedar Lane thing, that's gonna be.
Oh, I will say, on a good note. Since I went to the office, I forgot to say this. Thank you for the three improvements that you are doing. I did want to say that tonight. I am very, very impressed with Chadwell Lane, with what you're doing out here on Fourth Street. I wanted to tell you I am happy as a city resident to see those improvements going on. I did want to tell you that. So thank you for that since the last time I was here.
Well, in answer to her question, you recall the budget you approved for this year calls for hiring an engineer to design replacement of the sections of, two or three, Steve? Two or three sections of old line in the city?
Oh, there'll be four Cedar, I think it's four.
Four.
Anytime you want to know what the money's going towards, you come by my office. I will go through it line by line and show you what every dollar goes to.
Okay.
It goes for anyone.
Steve, didn't you tell me?
Steve, come up to the microphone, please.
Didn't you explain to me one, the county doesn't treat their water like we do?
The county does not have a treatment process at all. Their wells are substantially different. They have different water quality that they get from the ground. We are in an area that has high iron, high manganese. We have a lime softening treatment plant, which softens the water, removes the iron, removes the manganese. It is a stable, non-corrosive water when it leaves the plant and gets to your home. County water is not. County water residents have extra line maintenance typically due to the hard water, the corrosiveness. They have a water softener. Nearly every home in the county has county water. They have the active cost of the salt or potassium or any other maintenance they may have on their water softener system. County residents have to pay for septic and sewer removal, drainage field maintenance, sewer lateral maintenance. City residents have to pay for sewer, sanitary sewer mains in the ground and treatment process down there, discharging to the creek. County residents are discharged into the ground where it's absorbed.
And they better not be too close to their well.
No.
Steve, just the little section we're done replacing the line there on Cedar, that's gonna be how expensive?
Seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, for what, two blocks?
Two blocks, two and a half blocks.
So you are replacing them? You're completely replacing old lines?
The second half has already been replaced. Thirty are cast iron or PVC. I think you're down on the corner, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You have a PVC main. Your one's already been replaced.
Okay.
So we did some research and we found that an old line goes all the way down between, I think it's walnut and cherry. And we will replace it from Fourth Street to that point before they put the new street back. That way a leak doesn't happen and we got to dig up a new street.
Yeah, that's what I was also considering.
It's all part of the plan. That is where some of that money goes.
Okay.
Let's see. Anna, note on that. Next week, we will put in the paper a request for qualifications for engineering services for the water and sewer line projects.
Steve, in the last five years that they had this last rate schedule set up, can you briefly go through some of the major projects that were done? I know Main Street, St. Mary's Road, Seraphin, Ninth Street, just in the last five years, that's quite a bit. How many miles would you say altogether of new water line?
Just that project alone is three and a half miles, which is just over ten percent of the system. That's three, almost three and a half miles of water lines that we replaced.
On what streets?
That was Riverview Drive, that was North Main, Trine Drive, all of Seraphin. We took it upon ourselves, we replaced a portion of South Sixth here on our own.
St. Mary's.
St. Mary's.
St. Mary's Road.
Ninth Street.
Ninth Street was another one. We abandoned, you know, the other day we abandoned four hundred feet on Chadwell Lane. We, we've exceeded in the past few years almost five miles of pipe. And that three point, that three and a half miles that was replaced between twenty fifteen and now, it cost one point, I mean, one point two million?
Stephen, also, just latest piece of equipment we bought, what it cost, and I don't know if a lot of people really know what jetting is and how often you have to do that, but can you touch on that?
We're required to jet every line in the city once every three years. That's what's required. A jetter is a high-pressure machine that goes inside the main, cleans it from, cleans the inside with the use of high-pressure water.
But it's a buildup that naturally occurs in there that you're jetting out?
Yeah, it naturally occurs. It's greases, fats, oils from cooking. It's a buildup of paper. You know, anything else, anyone decides to flush.
Roots, Cedar, right?
Roots, yes.
Pretty important process.
Absolutely.
How much, Paul?
That was fifty-eight thousand.
Any other public comments?
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll close the public hearing. It is six forty-seven.
So the question is then whether the board wants to provide direction to the staff as to what to prepare for your consideration at a future meeting?
Oh, five year or?
Three, five, one?
Uh, I don't know.
But I mean, are we setting that as a fixed rate every year?
It would be that percentage every year, should you do that?
Will there be a public hearing every year?
No. So if you want a public hearing every year, then let's just set it for a year. And every year we'll, at this time, we'll have another public hearing and ask for another adjustment.
I think it's important, I think it's important to get some citizen input on a yearly basis, in my opinion. Because sure, maybe, maybe this time around, the dollar fifty doesn't mean a whole lot, but about four years after a dollar fifty a month, maybe people will care a little bit more. So what, we're already bound by contract with Alliance by an increase of so much per year for how many years now?
It's, uh,
You're talking about Alliance's contract?
No more than three percent and twenty twenty-one is the expiration date on the contract.
So we really can't go out past that on a long term?
Well, your rate, I mean, Alliance's cost is only a percent of the
Right.
You know, of the budget for, for water and sewer. But, but you're not obligated to do anything. I mean, just, you know, the, the prior board, five years ago, wanted to get on a schedule that didn't require an annual public hearing. This board may say, no, we want to, we want to hear it every year. I'm fine with that, too.
Well, the, you know, my point was instead, what if Alliance comes to us in two thousand and twenty-one and says, we've set this two percent is not enough, then how do we?
We can always change.
Yeah, you know, you're not, you're not, once you've done this, you can pass an ordinance to amend it. The only thing this does is if you do The only thing this does is if you do more than one year, is we don't revisit it this time every year.
I don't necessarily mind going two years. Anything beyond two years, the potential of the entire board change is there. I mean, we got a 50% turnover rate possibility every year. And I don't like binding any future board past what our current members are serving.
Let's do a year.
Then I would say do 2% for one year, guys.
Well...
Year, I'm, I'm, I want a public hearing every year.
You'd get that if you do the 2%.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
That's, it's your call, Mr. S.
We need, we don't vote on that, though.
Yeah, well, no, you don't vote on it. But I will prepare an ordinance for consideration at your next meeting calling for 2% for one year. And that's what we budget.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, there was one item, and I wanted to include in my report that wasn't in it, but came up today. And Gary, would you come forward, please? Gary, Gary, here. The elimination of Cedar, even with the performance of the work on South Gavri, we still have some tonnage.
We still have about 800 tons left. There, you know, so Dan brought it up to me today that we was gonna have that if we wanted to go ahead and spend that money and do another street or just take that and continue running Fourth Street with it as far as it'll go. You know, let's get right there.
So, that's continuing, or we've already taken into consideration that little section of South Gavri?
Yes. After that, we still have this much in the contract.
Gary, I talked to you a second. How far do you think that will take us?
Probably another 1,000 feet.
To the bridge?
I didn't, didn't have time to, you know, wheel it off or what, but...
Means you're out and about all the time, Gary. What's your recommendation?
I think that's a good street. I mean, I'd be in next year's plan to finish that out, so, you know, just to continue that.
All the equipment's gonna be there, so might as well do Fourth Street.
We'll just have to get the sewer risers. I don't know how quickly we can get all that stuff, but...
So, where, where would it actually continue to?
I don't, I didn't get a chance to measure that. Dan's supposed to get with me in the morning and we'll figure it out.
You know, when I first got here, we did some street work, but they were kind of off-the-beaten-path streets. And some people said, why did you guys ever do any streets? And I said, well, we did Westbrook, and we did this, and we did that. And they said, well, we never, we don't, those are subdivision streets. These are highly visible, highly traveled streets that I think give a sense of, as Karen pointed out, of the work, work's being done and it's benefiting the community. So, I think the Fourth Street extension would be money well spent.
I agree.
Gary, while you're up there, a year or two ago out there on Chadwell, you did something with some brush trimming along the edges right up there next to the entrance. Is that something you did or is that something the county?
Uh, up at 61?
Yeah.
We trimmed back the stuff along the rock wall there.
Means you do that with a machine or was that just?
No, well, by hand.
We need to consider a couple of those curves on Chadwell. If we can get some of that trimmed back, I mean, with the smooth pavement up through there, people are not slowing down.
A little faster, yeah.
I'd like to actually add a couple of signs up there, too, if we could. Cedar limit, something slow, dangerous curve, something to slow them down.
That's a, that's a common unintended consequence of road overdoses.
But yeah, I mean, all that, right, basically almost all the way right up to the road is private property, so I guess we'd have to contact the property owners later.
Martin has already...
It's hanging over the road.
Already been talking to some of them, haven't you, as far as some right-of-way along to Chadwell? Or have you started that yet?
Well, I, I can't start that without hiring an engineer and then you'd have to authorize me to do that. I mean, I know where, I know, I know where we have sufficient right-of-way and where the property lines come into the road. In order to acquire the right-of-way from the adjacent property owners, we'd have to define, surveying or engineering the, and get a legal description for what we want to get, to get, to get an easement. I just, you know, I'd pay somebody for that.
So, can we legally approach the property owners to trim some of that brush back?
Oh, the trimming part is not a problem. The question is whether you would express interest in me acquiring additional right-of-way.
Right. That's two different things.
Yeah, okay, yeah, the trimming is easy.
I think that's something I need to look at.
As far as that Fourth Street work, couldn't we just say at least go to the bridge? I mean, even if we're kind of, looks like we might be a little short with that.
Yeah, we've got a contract on a per-ton basis, so yes, we could do that.
A hundred feet short.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I agree. It was funny to stop.
I'll get with Dan tomorrow and see what, what price is to the bridge and stop. And we may have extra, you know, on the other project, we've had extra tonnage on the port we did, too.
Right.
You know, it all depends on the level of wedge and...
Yeah, you never know. It's, it's an estimate. That's why we do it by ton until they do it. We don't know the rest of it.
Yeah. No one is when they're done.
Right.
All right. Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
Moving on to the consent agenda, did everybody get a chance to look through their? Then your closed meeting.
Feels like forever ago.
Yeah, it does, you know? Is that the one we got? Close. Move approval on the consent agenda.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to old business, bill number 4326, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate contract with Bogie Creek Properties for the sale of five acres on Progress Parkway, first reading.
Oh, that's supposed to be second reading.
Yeah.
Okay, second reading.
Sorry.
No approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Roll call.
Roll call.
It's getting there, you still have that. Roll call.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jupers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen?
Yes.
Seven, yes, zero, one, absent. Bill number 4326 now becomes 4254.
Now, recall that this contract is contingent upon a zone change, which we will initiate rather than got owner under contract initiating it to accommodate the residential use of the land.
And under new business, we have bill number 4327, an ordinance approving a tax-exempt equipment lease purchase agreement with the First State Community Bank for the purchase of two police cars, first reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 4328, an ordinance calling for the general election of officers of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri to be held April 7th, 2020 and providing notice to the general public, first reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other business before the board? Bob?
With our recent sale of real estate and stuff, what's our intentions to do with those funds?
Those funds are currently received into the general fund and sitting in a checking account. If you decide that you wanna dedicate them for some other use, just tell me and we'll have to do a budget amendment in order to move them to capital improvements or whatever.
What are, what is the total of the, the assets sold this year? Let's see, we had the six, the six...
Six hundred thousand. After expenses, it was 598,000 something and then 50,000.
And then the five acres?
And then the Bogie?
And then this will be part of it, at, at 25 an acre, so...
We still have to pay off the light loan, right?
Yeah.
So, five acres?
Well, it's down, it's down, down now. It was more than 30-some thousand.
Thirty, so...
We can continue to make payments on the loan. We don't have to pay it off.
Yeah, we're paying the interest, right?
2%.
What was that for, I'm sorry?
We made light improvements in the, in the building.
That we sold. Is there a...
We're only getting one and a half percent on your, you're only getting one and a half percent if you pay the loan off.
Yeah, you save a half percent.
I mean...
Math, it works, yeah.
Well, we've, we've determined, or at least, of course, not an official resolution or anything, but I remember having discussions that we kind of determined in our general fund, we're fine with our emergency funds where they're at. We didn't wanna take away, we don't really need to add to. Is there any way we can, I don't know if it'd be forming a committee or at least talk about what we wanna do with this money, the mayor?
Uh, the, the C code allows for the mayor to appoint a finance committee. So, we, you don't, he's free to do that and then that committee could consider the use of these funds.
I think we all should have a voice in it.
Well, they would be making a recommendation to you that, if you, or, I mean, it's up to you. You wanna have a work session to deal with it?
I'm fine with that, too. I mean, if we'd have a work session, unless someone would rather have a committee, but a work session would be sufficient for me or a start. I mean, but that's up to everybody else.
Well, let's have the work session that we chose not to have tonight because people couldn't attend. And then we'll schedule a work session. Typically, going into the holiday months, we have one meeting a month instead of two because it's obviously the second Thursday of November falls on Thanksgiving. So, it's, you know, we can schedule a work session for that purpose during the week that we're not otherwise gonna have a meeting, not on Thanksgiving. But while we're sitting here, what, what dates are good for work sessions for you? Assuming we need two sometime in the near future.
So, do you not wanna have the meeting in December, the day after Christmas?
Probably not.
So, we're just gonna have one meeting in November?
Well, we have, we would normally have one meeting in December, November, and one meeting in December.
That's good.
Now, now, now we're saying we need to have sometime between now and the end of the year, two work sessions. One to go over the hazard...
Do you wanna discuss the rezoning of the five acres versus what direction we want to take it?
Well, that's...
I think we talked about that.
We talked about it.
Yeah, well, last time.
We're just gonna do the five acres and that's it.
I think that's kind of what we're going with. Let's see, what do you oppose?
Okay.
Leave our options open.
So, we're gonna have a work session.
Mitigation and nuisances of the budget.
Oh, the nuisance, yes.
And I, I had some questions about what exactly we were discussing.
Exactly.
For the nuisance, are we, I mean, is it the enforcement? Is it the definition?
No, it's enforcement.
Okay.
Do you want, before we proceed, under the code as it exists, to enforce the public nuisance? Do you want that brought back to the board? The decision prior to now has been, no, just do your job. I'm, I'm hearing now that maybe people wanna hear about it before it happens or maybe it's just a matter of better communication with the board.
I think it's just a matter of better communication.
I think, I think it's, yeah, and, and it was more the, before we spent money on the properties.
Well, that is the, I mean, that's...
Well, I mean, outside of, obviously, communication with the property is, is minimal administration cost, but before you go and spend reasonable amount of money on abatements and, and I think that's kind of what I was looking for.
Is there a dollar figure you kind of have in mind? That's kind of what the work session was gonna be.
Well, I guess, do we still plan on having that work session?
Do you wanna have the work session before, like at 5:00, before the meeting on November 14th?
At 5:00, 5:15, whatever can anybody make?
So, will that be three things at that work session?
No, that work session would just be hazard mitigation and what, what our policy's gonna be on code enforcement. And then in a subsequent work session, we would go over...
The finance thing?
The, the finance committee and capital improvements and all that.
Okay.
Yeah.
We won't need a committee if we're gonna do it as a work session.
Okay.
So, we need two work, two, two work sessions. So, we got one set for 5:15.
Why, I mean, is, can everybody make five?
The hazard mitigation will take, I don't know how long it'll take, but it shouldn't take too long.
It's on what day now?
Before the next meeting on the 14th of November.
It's a Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you make five, Joe?
Okay. Or close? Five and five.
I'll make, we'll, we'll work best on that, yeah. As soon as you can make five.
I can now, yep.
Okay.
We close at 11:00 AM, so I'm good.
Perfect. Okay, then you, then, then, then do you wanna just wait until then to schedule a second one?
Yes.
That's probably preferred, yeah.
It would be helpful, though, if we're gonna have a work session, give us a little something written, what we're gonna talk about, instead of coming into a meeting blind and then trying to figure out what we're gonna talk about.
I thought we were still talking about how we were gonna deal with some problem properties that we have not taken any action on. I didn't realize it was just a basic, are, are we gonna keep going the way we're going?
Well, that's the question that's been raised in the last couple of weeks. And that's why I said, wait a minute, whoa, let's get, don't get on the same page here.
Okay. Yeah, if you could, before that meeting, send us a little more detail, maybe some bullet points that you'd like to discuss, I would appreciate that and help us be a little more prepared and focused.
On the target.
Yeah.
Well, what, I mean, because you want us to be at the nuisance, what do you, what do you, it's your work session, so what do you all wanna talk about? I mean, I, I could give a presentation about the legal process of enforcing the lien, but I mean, I don't, I don't know what, what you all want. I, I really don't know what you all wanna talk about.
One thing I think, I don't think anybody here likes is we put out money, we never get nothing back. What can we do to correct that?
Okay, I can answer those. I mean, you, there's a legal process that you can go through, but it's...
But is it worth the money you're spending?
That's always a concern.
I get a sense that that's the bulk of what the discussion will be, the debate between us about...
But I, I can, I can give kind of a brief rundown of what it takes to get, get a collection and then you'll maybe have a better understanding of why, why cities, a lot of times, don't even seek to enforce those liens and just sit on and wait for somebody to buy us a property. So, I can certainly do that.
But they can be sold for non-paying of taxes and you're still not gonna get your money, right?
If, if it's, if it's sold for non-paying of taxes, generally, the, our lien gets wiped out with, with all the other liens. That's correct, because the tax lien is, supersedes the other liens. Now, it depends on how we assert the lien and, and all that, but, and oftentimes, you'll have somebody that they're willing to buy it and develop it. The city will agree to waive the liens if they're significant or negotiated or something like that. But, but it's always a cost-benefit analysis on the back end. And what I always advise my cities is when you're going forward with the abatement process, you should do it as an, with the understanding you're not gonna get your...
I have lots of questions, but I'm gonna save them.
So, what, what do most cities do?
You abate the nuisance and you just...
Eat the money?
Not get the money.
Okay.
But we can talk about that a lot more detail. When I go through the procedure, you'll understand that's what we want. You have to go through this process and you're probably on the wrong side. But you have, you have to go through the collection process. It's just like when you're suing anybody, you always, you're just getting a judgment.
Doesn't mean you collect.
Doesn't mean you collect.
Right.
It's just a piece of paper. You have to go through this process.
Yes. Sam, good.
That's it.
What are you gonna do, Joe?
We don't do the motion to adjourn anymore, do we?
It's up to you. No, we don't have to.
All right.
Any other business?
Any other business?
Hearing none?
You have a cold or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was out yesterday, I had fever.